Deliberate and act on an MOU for county regional SWCD groundwater initiative. Colfax, Harding, Mora, and Union Counties.
Mayor and Commission, the agreement that you have has been an ongoing planning issue. There's been a separate planning issue in Union County. There's been an initiative to have a groundwater analysis done in Colfax County. And you see where this is going, and it really turned into a regional initiative. The City of Raton has been represented in a series of meetings by Mr. Campbell. And Mr. Campbell, I don't know if I can call on you to update the commission on how this process has gone and what we see in the proposed MOU.
I would just note that we would ask them to change the Village of Raton to the City of Raton.
The Mayor and Commissioners, this has been an ongoing process that started primarily about Colfax County. Colfax County has got a history of not having very much groundwater. There's a few pockets on the edge like Capulon. Maxwell was one of them, but typically that is exactly why most of the communities in this county are on surface water. This is a larger area. They're trying to go to the state engineer's office. Believe that last groundwater study in Colfax County was in the 1930s. Hasn't been undertaken since with today's technology. Look at it, probably will be some brackish water there. The question on a lot of that's going to be just how brackish is it as to our treatment is quite expensive. A drought, as we all heard, along the California coast and other places, they are treating saltwater, but it does come at quite a cost. Some of that will be looked at. This actually doesn't require any financial commitment, just a support from the city as they move forward with this. Raton has been dedicated and studied this at length as a surface water community. We've got two pristine sources we do it from, but at the same time, this is a big issue to the county in the northeast corner, and this would help to find what is down there. This would be a long-term process to try to move forward with this because it takes quite a bit of documentation and study, especially when you get into some sampling of what quality of water is there and what quantity. Some of it has to do with aging that water. How quick does it replenish? That's a big issue right now is, as you raise groundwater and pump it out, are you overdrawing what's in place? A lot of that's going on along the Panhandle as we speak. Those are a lot of issues that this will help bring to light in this area. They're actually asking for our support as we move forward with this. Some in-kind services, we do have some expertise, some water testing issues that we could probably assist with as this moves forward.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dan?
May I make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the four county regional SWCDs groundwater initiative?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this memorandum of understanding for four county regional SWCD groundwater initiative. Colfax, Harding, Mora, and Union Counties. My only problem with this is number five under administration. At this time, they're not asking for any fiscal or fund obligations, and we're not giving them any by signing this document. But it goes on to say, at such time, we could become financially responsible. You know, I don't know how anybody else feels about that. I do think it would show up a strong support if they're going to the state engineering office if everybody's in agreement.
They're also saying these endeavors should be outlined in separate agreements.
Yeah, it would be a separate agreement.
I think at that time, we could make a decision.
We can address it then? Mm-hmm. Okay. We have, like I said, we had a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackwell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Segada?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Deliberate and act on award of agreement for scrap tire tipping.
Mayor and Commission, looking ahead a little E and F, that has to do with two components of scrap tire handling in the City of Raton. This item has to do with tipping. And the next item, we're going to talk about transportation, two separate issues. Well, two separate vendors, not two separate issues. But I would state that I think many of you commissioners have seen that we have a large pile of scrap tires at the current convenience center, and this is a goal of getting rid of all of the scrap tires. We would also evaluate our role in the future in handling those scrap tires. So Jason Phillips, the solidest manager of City of Raton, has put a lot of time into items E and F. And if I could call on Jason to come forward and update the commission on costs, grant funding, and answer any of your questions on this item.
Mayor and Commission, what we've got is project number NMED 15-01. That's a tire recycling grant through the rate process of NMED. As Mr. Scott alluded to, it is scheduled to expire at the beginning of the next fiscal year. What we've put together here with the help of Tim Gray from the Environment Department, they had requested a written quote process because our total funds expended are under the $60,000 combined. So we did two separate requests for written quotes. The grant is for tire recycling, so a lot of facilities will mono-fill tires. Those wouldn't be eligible for this process. So as you can see in your packet, we requested prices from GeoCycle. They're based out of Colorado Springs, Colorado, Oklahoma Tire Recyclers, as well as State Rubber and Environmental Solutions, and they're out of Denver City, Texas. Each one has a little different end product. GeoCycle submitted the low quote, $55 a ton. And the recyclable method that GeoCycle does is they shred tires, they take them to a plant in Florence, Colorado. They mix them with 70% coal, 30% tires, and they fire a cement kiln with them. So that is a little different than what State Rubber or one of these other recyclers would do where they create a crumb rubber product that there's a back sale market for. So we did get confirmation from the Environment Department that tire drive fuel, or TDF, is an acceptable way to expend the grant funds, and they have concurred that it is. So our first item would be a recommendation that we award a contract to GeoCycle at the submitted price of $55 per ton for tipping fees. On the backside of that, generally, when you're dealing with transportation and tipping fees, it's the lowest net to the city. Obviously, GeoCycle has the lowest price, and the other facilities are much farther away, so we received concurrence to not even bother getting a transportation cost to Denver City, which is four times farther.
Okay.
So we did receive four prices for the next item. They're broke down into the per-trip price, really competitive in the transportation trucking usually is. The low quota on that item is InterWest LLC at $590 a trip with an estimated 30 trips. The tire weights are relative and a little approximate based upon the composition of each bale, but we'd estimate 30 trips with an average of 22 bales per trip, somewhere between 22 and 24. We believe with the available grant funds that we will be able to remove all tire bales from the site, and we may be able to get rid of some of the loose tires that we have as well. So at this point, I would entertain any questions, but my recommendation would be that we approve each vendor for the next two items as the low quotes.
Okay.
I have a question for you, Mr. Phillips.
Yes, sir.
On the transportation services, the transportation cost, what does it cost us per load generally to transport these?
The transportation, the estimated quantity of 30 on that is a per-trip price, so that is your per load. So it's $590. As a rule of thumb, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $4 a loaded mile, which is a one-way haul. It's fairly comparable to what we're paying to transport trash or somewhere distant. Another caveat of this process is scrap tires are kind of a nuisance in the world for environment departments, and you require a certain certification to be able to haul those. So as part of this, I verified that our low quota that we've recommended award to does possess a New Mexico scrap tire hauler certificate.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to award the agreement for the scrap tire tipping. Undo them both together?
If you'd like to.
And also, I make a motion to accept the award for the agreement for the scrap tire transportation.
Okay. I'll second that. We have a motion and a second to award the tipping fee contract to GeoCycle for $55 per ton and award InterWest LLC the transportation contract at $590 a load. I guess that's not a load.
Yes.
A load. Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Jackwell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes, and thanks for your work. Our next item of business is deliberate and act on closing agreement accepting educational building located at 100 South First Street. We just received the agreement from the attorney, and I would like to postpone this until we actually had a time for each of us to read this. I need a motion and a second.
Make a motion to that effect, please.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to postpone the deliberation and acting on this closing agreement until the next commission meeting. That's acceptable with everyone. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliberate and act on the purchase of fencing material to replace on Gardner Road right away.
Mayor and Commission, to reflect back to our last meeting, we did have some members of the Raton High School, FFA, present, and they asked you to consider a cost-sharing arrangement where they would replace fencing on the Gardner Road or Red River Road right away. Their proposal was they would provide the labor if the city would purchase materials consisting of steel fence posts and barbed wire for that project. So we have obtained some pricing from local vendors. The quantities are estimated. I would tell you that we did get a bid in earlier today, or a written quotation, actually. So you can see that we're talking about around $750. Because we need to really refine those quantities, I would ask for a little flexibility on that expense if the commission would like to authorize that. We are fencing city right away. I would suggest that we pay for this out of the gas tax for street improvements.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the low bid for the materials to build the fence.
Second.
What are we looking at for a little bit?
Still Raton builder supply.
Actually, it looked like we did get a price in from BTU Building Materials that generally, if we accept the quantities that we have there, is a little bit lower.
Okay, so it doesn't include the gross receipts? Is that what? This one does not include the gross receipts?
Right, and so we would not consider that in our consideration.
Right, so that makes the quote from BTU lower.
Would you come back to us with the proper amount of everything?
What we're asking for, Commissioner, is that we would get your authorization to purchase the materials. Like we say, the exact quantities of this are going to be plus and minus, but we would ask you to authorize about $800 worth of material purchases.
Agree with Neil's motion?
Second.
Would you restate your motion?
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of supplies to complete this project in the estimated realm of $800 or so.
Okay. You want to second that again?
All second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of fencing material in the amount not to exceed $850. Roll call vote?
Mayor Potem Segada?
Yes.
Commissioner Jackwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Mance?
Yes. Motion passes. Deliver in 2015-11 approval of an economic development strategy plan. Mr. Jenkins?
Mayor and Commissioners, this economic development strategic plan has been over a year in the making. It represents the input of some 65 citizens, two public meetings, scrutiny by a group of what we called the Blue Ribbon Economic Development Committee, as well as a presentation through the city manager to the various department heads to make sure that what we came up with was something that was not only workable but desirable. I can't tell you how proud I am of the work that these people did, and I think that you will find that the goals are achievable, they're specific. We have initiatives listed under each goal. We have timelines and measurables, and this is a plan that should not end up sitting on anybody's desk. We have not anticipated any money from the city in terms of achieving these goals. The extent to which we can get the community involved is going to determine the extent to which we're able to implement this plan. And we, as members of this group, have each committed ourselves to be a part of that process. This was not a Grow Raton effort alone. We've, Grow Raton facilitated this process and has taken responsibility, in many cases, to go ahead and recruit people under the recommended champions. In other cases, we have stated who we think would be the best possible champion for this, but without committing them to that. The last thing I'd like to say is that in setting these goals, it's our hope to present to the public and to prospective site selectors, prospective businesses that might consider relocating to Raton, that we are committed to economic development, that we have a plan for the future growth of our city, and that we're moving ahead. And I ask for your positive vote in adopting this plan.
When I first read your vision statement, and it said that it was anchored by the Palace Hotel, I kind of was taken back. But also, on page 16, you're talking about the reopening of the Palace Hotel, and so I'm making an assumption that's why you made that the anchor.
The vision statement is for the year 2020, and we envision that within the next five years, either the current owner, who has invested quite a bit of money in revitalizing that structure, or a subsequent developer who might want to make the Palace Hotel as part of a larger investment in the First Street complex, would work with us to achieve our goal of having a revitalized downtown First Street area with the Palace Hotel as a major feature.
The other thing is, of course, it's recommended, so that's okay. When I was reading the things that you wanted the Public Works Department to champion, my only question was, I don't know if we have enough people in Public Works to be able to take on this project. But since it's recommended, it could be changed.
Madam Mayor, my only comments would be, what differs in this plan from the previous one we approved?
We have never adopted a specific economic development plan, to my knowledge, at least not since 2005.
Twenty thousand in 2012, I thought we did.
I don't think it was approved. It was just presented. But we'd have to go back and...
Many of the things that are in here represent suggestions that came out of that 2012 effort, and that process, while I think a good starting point, was not adequate to produce the type of plan that we have here. And it did not achieve the type of involvement as far as other citizens beyond the city employees and the managers. And here, we have a plan that hopefully the entire community will get behind.
Who will be responsible for monitoring that these goals are being met?
I think that the adopted champion, as opposed to recommended champion, the one who finally accepts responsibility, will be saying as a part of that commitment that they will be looking at the milestones that we want to achieve and the dates and timing, and be in a position to report back to the Blue Ribbon Committee and eventually to the commission on the progress that's being made.
Who is the Blue Ribbon Committee, and what are they part of?
They were a group of, among the many participants, I don't have the list with me exactly, and I hesitate to try to name them all. Bill Allen, Jose Arch...
It's a group within the Raton?
No. This was a group that expressed interest in fine tuning the work that had been done through the two committees. It represented the business community. We had two of the pastors that were a part of it, Tim Sexton, Reverend Sexton, and Reverend Adrian Coleman. We had Paul Kessler on the group, and we had Jose Archuleta was a member of that group. I apologize to any of the other members if I'm not recalling all names. There were about 15 people involved in that Blue Ribbon Committee.
And you've had discussions with all the recommended champions, and you have agreements to participate?
No. The recommended champions are just that it'll be up to the Grow Raton as the facilitator for this project to see if we can get those commitments, and if not, to recruit somebody else. I will say that the plan and its various evolutions has gone to not only members of the city commission, but also to department heads and city manager. And we feel confident that if there were a major objection, it would have come to at this point. I know we've talked to the Chamber of Commerce about their role in this, and I've presented the information to not only Diana Sanchez, President of Main Street, but also to Ben DeFerry, their executive director.
And that might be a good place for me to make a comment here. I have looked this over for a while now with the intent of having it dovetail to what the city does, what the city is capable of doing, what the city would be planning on doing. And I think that we have done that, and I've had a number of communications with Mr. Jenkins, and then he's passed that along to the group. And there's been modifications made to the plan a number of times. So there's been quite a bit of that. I feel pretty comfortable that the plan does dovetail to, you know, what we plan to do, what we can do, and what we are required to do. And so it comes to you now with, really, my endorsement and the staff, that we have worked on this over a period of time.
Yeah, I knew you had been working together on this, but I noticed, reading through it earlier today, that there were a lot of, you know, a lot of champions that, you know, I'm hoping that you've had at least some communication with that.
As I said before, in the process, the evolution of the plan, we made every effort to distribute it to the people who would be affected by it. We think that effective communication is going to be the key to making it successful, but also, as we said before, I said before, we're not asking for the city to provide any financial support to this, except perhaps for the time that their city employees might be involved in dealing with certain things. The success of this program is going to depend upon the community embracing it and stepping forward. And we're hoping that your approval of the plan will be a unifying force within the community so that we will truly have a concerted community effort to develop our economy.
Well, it definitely takes city and community.
Yeah, it takes all of us.
And a lot of good communication, so...
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor, that Resolution Number 2015-11, City of Raton adopted economic development strategic plan for the fiscal year 2015 through 2020.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2015-11, approval of an economic development strategic plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Deliberate and act on street improvements from state purchasing agreements, application of surface treatment aggregates, asphalt emulsions, and crack ceiling hot mixed pavement.
Mayor and Commission, I know that that is a mouthful, and I'll kind of start with the report that you have in your packet here, and the bottom line is, we have a long way to go on improving our streets.
Yeah.
You know, we have a long way to go on all of our infrastructure, but we have seen an impact from the snow that we got over the winter with the streets. Our Public Works crew has really dedicated a lot of time to getting out there and patching potholes, but there's a lot of them out there, and I think it kind of underlines that we are behind on really maintenance of these streets. So we've kind of gone through with you what the resources we have in hand, what's available, and I guess the bottom line is that we do have some money accrued in the general fund, $189,000, that we would like to put to work on these streets as soon as possible. And then we do receive gas tax, which goes into a special, goes into Special Revenue Fund 217, and one of the strategies there is that we could use those funds to leverage grant funds. And so you see that we have some cooperative agreement projects scheduled. We have those grant agreements in hand, some municipalities program projects, and that's generally where the Special Revenue Fund gas tax would go, is to leveraging those kind of programs. So our recommendation to the commission is that we get, we use the $189,000 that is in the general fund to try to get as big an impact as we can on streets. And so you can go to any part of town, and you can see needs for streets. You can see needs for drainage, and I think that it's a long conversation on how we do this, but I'll kind of get to the bottom line of that, that I do believe that we have to have a consistent program every year of attacking these. We're not going to go out and correct all our street problems in one year and then have the luxury of not thinking about that for the next couple of years. So what we're trying to do here, and one of the conclusions hopefully you get from the report, is that we have a sustainable street improvement program, and we're going to have to work on it year after year, and we're not going to get them all done in a short amount of time. So with that in mind, a recommendation that I would like to bring to the commission is that we look at the avenues in the Maxwell South Edition. And from my evaluation of streets, these streets are, of all the streets that we have that have needs, these streets are especially in poor condition. So let's talk about where the Maxwell South Edition is located. That's the subdivision that's generally west of the Little League baseball field, the high school football field, the soccer complex, those avenues that go up to the old MCMC Long Term Hospital. So we're talking about Ninth Avenue, Tenth, Eleventh, Twelfth, Thirteenth, and Fourteenth Avenue. And what we're recommending to you is that... And what we're recommending to you is that the way that we would be able to have some improvements, some meaningful improvement in that with the budget that we have, is we're evaluating a chip seal surfacing on those streets. Now, if we had the money, we would rebuild those streets. They're at that point where it would be justified that we simply removed them and reconstructed them. We don't have anywhere close to that kind of budget. So we're recommending that we chip seal those avenues so that we're doing something. And we would tell you that that would extend the life of these streets seven to eight years. And we would look at construction methods like chip seal as we go forward on other streets that, in an ideal world, we would rebuild them, but we just don't have that kind of budget. So you see some of the numbers there. We would propose doing resurfacing 16 blocks on those avenues, and we would estimate that the cost is around $100,000. And with the $100,000, that gives us a little bit of contingency in there. Now, on chip seal, the work is available on a state purchasing agreement. And so, the state has bid that work, and we can use those prices. So we reference a state purchase agreement, and so, we would not bring you a sealed bid, we would ask you to approve a purchase order, and we'd just purchase off of that state purchasing agreement for chip seal work. Also, the asphalt material that we use in that process, the asphalt emulsion, is also available on a state purchasing agreement. So we procure off of that as well. We'd issue a separate PO to a separate vendor for that. So we've talked to those vendors, there is some work that would be, they would be in Las Vegas, and we would pay mobilization for them to come to Raton from Las Vegas when they're doing work there.
Much better than the courtroom.
So the one thing that's not, under a state purchasing agreement, is the rock, is the aggregate. And for chip seal, it's special gradation, it has to be a very clean rock, and we'll have to go out and get prices on that, and bring that back to the Commission, if you like this concept of chip sealing those. But we're doing 18,000 square yards, 16 blocks, for about $100,000. That's getting a lot of bang for the buck. It's not rebuilding the streets.
Yeah.
It's not a new street. What we would have to do is, with our crew, make sure all of the patching is done, and the potholes that are there, we'll have to fix those. It'll have to be very clean, and then the contractor will come in and do the work. The work would consist of, spread the asphalt emulsion, put the aggregate down over it, they roll it, they sweep it, and then they fog seal it, which is a layer of asphalt sprayed on top of the aggregate. So there are probably a couple of methods we could, we could talk about on these avenues. We'll probably bring additional methods to you in the future, but I feel confident in this chip seal recommendation. We would also ask you to approve crack sealing purchase, that crack sealing is also on a state contract. It looks to me like we would put down a minimum of 10 tons of the crack sealing material, and if we take the price on that contract, that brings us to $17,500. And where we would want to use crack sealing is on streets that we've paved within the last 10 years. Because if you look at Grant Avenue, it's probably there about 10 years old, and you start to see these random cracks in there. And what happens is, moisture from snow or rainfall gets down to the base, and that's where we start to see those streets falling apart. If we can keep those sealed up, we can really increase the life of those streets. So we may not get all of them done, that we've paved within the last 10 years. Grant is definitely the top one on the list. We also would look at Jones Street, Cedar Street, and some of the streets around the Romero Park area that were done maybe about four or five years ago. We'll go as far as this, $17,500 will take us, and when we get to that point, we'll stop, and we'll come back next year and do some more crack sealing. Crack sealing should be a part of a regular street maintenance program. And you see that on the highway, you see crews out crack sealing all the time, and you just do some every year. So that's what we're recommending to you here. Now, on those three procurements, again, state purchasing agreements, what we're proposing, we're just asking you to authorize us to issue a purchase order to those vendors, and we'll get that work going. Now, in the report, we also do a summary of those costs plus some additional work. So you can see that we have a match on our co-op agreement projects, and we're proposing to do a full reconstruction of two blocks of Pecos Avenue. That would be First Street to Third Street, if the bids come in within the funds that we have here. And one block of Galisteo Avenue, that would be from First Street to Second Street. You can see our match there. We have a match on the Tiger Drive project, and we would propose taking this out of the $189,000. Now on Sixth, where you see there is no match, there's no city funds in that, that's an error, my error, it's not Tiger Drive, that's First Street project, not Tiger Drive. So we've got a lot of questions on Tiger Drive, because Tiger Drive is in especially poor condition after the winter. So what we're proposing to do on Tiger Drive is resurface the street on the west side of the railroad tracks. That kind of matches with the money that we have here, $193,000. And then on the east side, we'd have to go find additional funding to do that, and I think that's, we try to patch that, and then go into next year and find a way to do that one. So now, if the capital outlay came through, and, you know, there was some money for Raton streets and the capital outlay, if that happened, this would be one that we would probably look at. But it is a good candidate for the MAP program. So what we would be able to complete, and this is new resurfacing, this is milling off a couple inches of existing asphalt and repaving that, would be from the railroad tracks going west, really towards the soy building. We would, we would complete that part of Tiger Drive. Lastly, we did ask the Department of Transportation for a donation of asphalt millings, and that's item number seven there. They did grant that, they said they would give us 500 cubic yards of millings. And what we would have to do is, they're stockpiled on I-25, the site of Three Mile Bridge, we'd have to have our contractor go out, load them, haul them, take them to the place that we want to use them, put them in a windrow, we'd have a contractor, again, grate them and compact those. So we put, established a budget of $10,000 to do that work. And where we use those is on secondary streets as some kind of surfacing, where we would not otherwise be able to surface a street. So I would tell you, there's probably a couple of places we could go with it, but what we're looking at is the part of Roundhouse Road that we have not been able to otherwise pay. So we would look at doing that, and the $10,000 is kind of an approximate price on getting that done. So you can see that we wind up, our proposal is that with these, we'd spend a little over $200,000, we would spend all of that, $189,000, and then we go to the gas tax for the additional money. That's the work that we would get done. We have some other street improvements that we'd like to bring to you, but it would be on a smaller scale. And we would, you know, have the gas tax left to go forward doing that. And you see the amount in gas tax right now. So if we get your approval on that plan, that leaves us about $260,000 in gas tax. And what we see is roughly about $12,000 a month coming into that. Now, I would tell you that the Legislature did approve a two-cent additional gas tax for municipalities. You could choose to implement that two cents, and it would be on sales of gasoline within the city limits. The downside to that is, the state doesn't collect that for us. We would have to set up a program to collect that two cents and do all of the administration on it. So we're going to look at, you know, what revenues there might be versus what the cost of administration would be on that. The only similar thing to that is lodger's tax, and we do have a program to collect lodger's tax. The state does not collect that. All other taxes really, I think, the state collects, and then they send us our share. But the similar thing is lodger's tax. Now, there has been a capability of a municipality doing that for a long time. Nobody has done that. Implemented a local option on gas tax and then gone out to collect it. Nobody has done that. But the Legislature did pass something this year that you could look at. And I'll hold up for questions right there.
So for three to seven, we have to go out for bid? Only one and two were incorporated into the state.
That's correct, Mayor.
Now, if you have a chance to see what kind of crack sealing work these guys do, because, you know, we've both seen bad crack sealing, we've seen real good cracks.
The contractor is a company called Dismuke, we're really familiar with them.
Chip sealing.
And they've done a lot of crack sealing in the area, and yeah, they're, they're very qualified to do it. Yep. Have no reservation about, you know, ordering the work from Dismuke. On the chip seal, we're very familiar with the asphalt vendor. This is not, this is a polymerized asphalt, it's really an excellent product. It's much better than the asphalt, the liquid asphalt that goes in hot mix pavement. It's really good, and this Holly Frontier is a really good vendor. The city in the past has done a lot of chip seal, and this is the vendor that sells that polymerized emulsion. Blue Collar Construction, we would look at for the work, not familiar with them. I don't know that we've talked to them, but not familiar with their work.
I like the idea of an ongoing plan that you're proposing to keep our streets, and by all means, the streets, the avenues from Ninth and Fourteenth, every time it rains, and even when there's games going on down there, you know, the, they're just, you have to send a street sweeper and a crew in there to just pick up the asphalt that's washed down to it, so. But it's a very good program, I believe, to continue annually.
Now, I'd point out that we're not doing the streets, Third, Fourth, Fifth, or Sixth Street.
It's the avenues.
16 blocks is the avenues. And I think they're in bad shape, but the streets themselves are, you know, decent, and probably, it's been 15 years ago, there was a rebuild of Fourth Street, and so, those are, those are decent. When you get around the football field, Third Street has got some trouble, Sixth Street has some trouble. We'd like to do those, but we really want to focus on these avenues.
Well, I'll move that we accept the proposed street project.
Okay.
One second, ma'am.
We have a motion and a second to act on the street improvement for state purchasing agreements, application of surface treatment. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Scola?
Yes.
Mayor Metz?
Yes, motion passes. LEDA ordinance.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, you have a draft of an update to the Local Economic Development Act ordinance. And what's driving the update here is that there's been revisions in the state statute, and as you see from the opening statement, that this would allow us to add businesses to the definition of qualified entity that would actually add some retail sales type of businesses. You can see that the draft, and this is right out of the state statute, does take into account the Arts and Cultural District, cultural facilities, economic development project definition. And so, the text in red would be the change from the existing ordinance, and in some cases, we're striking out existing provisions and proposing to take that out. We do have Mr. Hegeman, Tim Hegeman, from State Economic Development on hand, he had helped us, given us a lot of assistance in bringing this ordinance update to the Commission. I would note that this is an introduction of an ordinance, and it would take us several meetings to get to the final action. Now, one thing I would point out to the Commission is that the existing ordinance has a provision for a Raton Economic Development Board. Mr. Hegeman had provided a recommendation to you that would change that makeup of the Economic Development Board. The task of the Economic Development Board would be reviewing and making recommendations to you, the governing body, on applications for industrial revenue bonds, or reviewing and making recommendations on applications for assistance for economic development projects. So you can see that currently, it provides for an Economic Development Board that is primarily staff. And I would say that the benefit to that is, we may talk to an economic development prospect that wants to know what's the availability of utilities, what's the availability of water, can we hook to the wastewater system? What's the cost of electricity in Raton? So it's valuable to have those staff members involved in the process, but I think that that's something that we want to have a discussion on going forward, because we recognize that in economic development, the City of Raton has a responsibility for economic development. But we are not the sole entity, there, it takes the involvement of the community, as we said under the strategic plan, it takes really a lot of involvement of the community to be successful. And so, we're a partner with a lot of other parties in the realm of economic development. And what we've stated is, it really depends on what specific economic development you target, and as to what kind of partners might bring, you know, help, information. So there's a discussion there on what we want to have in the ordinance. Right now, currently, I think that we try to partner up with entities or individuals in the community that bring something to a specific discussion.
I'll make a motion that we act on the introduction of the code ordinance for the planning and development, on the LEDA ordinance.
Do we, I don't believe we need to take any action, it's just an introduction.
Yes, it's just an introduction.
We have, we have to, do we have public meetings in 30 days to which to post this?
Mayor and Commissioner, we would, I believe, have a public hearing scheduled. We can certainly take comments here this evening, it's your option, but we would definitely schedule a public hearing as well.
I retract my motion.
Is there anyone that would like to address the Commission on this issue?
My name is Paul Jenkins, President of Grow Raton. Under the strategic plan which you just adopted, one of the areas of concern was that the, what's called the Raton Economic Development Board consisted solely of city employees. And I think it's important to take a look at what the process is. This ordinance comes into play when, up at This ordinance comes into play when a potential economic development project is going to be seeking assistance. There's going to be a lot of dialogue that's already gone on in terms of what's available in terms of electricity, utility, water. At this point that the ordinance comes into play, they're seeking specific incentives from the city. And we feel that it would be to the advantage of, as betterment of everyone, if there were more citywide input in that process. Now, the adoption of a specific project requires an ordinance in and of itself. So there is a point in the process where public hearings would be held. But we're talking about the very beginning of that process and not at the very beginning of the economic development process. I think at some point in time, we want to show the community that this is not just an action that's being considered by the city administration, but that they're being asked to comment and how they feel it fits into the overall plan. And so that was the recommendation of the group to put together the strategic plan. We don't have any specifics in our plan as far as who should be members of that Raton Economic Development Board. However, we feel that some representation from the community would be appropriate.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the commission on this particular subject? Okay. Questions, other questions? It's my understanding, this is the introduction to the ordinance, but it's, it can be tweaked. It's not cast in stone.
Mayor, will some of the organizations like Main Street have a chance to look at the draft?
I think that we do want to have a process here of having all stakeholders review what we have here. And so absolutely, I will make sure that this is, this goes out to the stakeholders that we identify, that we know about, Main Street certainly, the Chamber. If we, or if somebody would like to look at it and we don't get it to them, certainly we want to talk to them, we want to get this out there. I think we have a chance to have a lot of conversation on this before, you know, we take any final action here.
Scott, answer your question, yes. All right. So this is the first introduction. And those of you that do not have copies, if you do not receive one, please request Next item of business is deliberate and act on appointment of board members to the City of Raton Board, which have vacancy. The first one is planning and zoning. There are two vacancies and I believe one applicant. So one or two?
One.
Just one. All right.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the Planning and Zoning Board application of Kevin R. Nolan.
Okay. I'll second that. Motion and a second to accept the application of Kevin Nolan to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, I board vacancy.
No, sir.
We have one application for the library board and one vacancy, and our applicant is Ron Schuster.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ron Schuster to the vacancy library board. Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the application of Ron Schuster to the library board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ron has been appointed. Park and Recreation Board, we have three vacancies, but we don't have any applicants, right?
No, we don't. We only received those two.
Okay.
I would comment, Mayor and Commission, that, you know, we, the city of Raton relies on people to step up and serve on these boards and commissions. We do have a number of openings. We'll have more openings as we go forward. So we would encourage if someone has a particular interest in any board or commission, just, you know, come in and fill out an application. We have it on file, and then when the vacancy comes up, we're able to bring it to the commission.
Okay. Public hearing, deliberate and act on resolution 2015-12, planning and zoning recommendations to commission for rezoning property at 1501 Trenesa Road from RHZ to R4.
Mayor and Commission, what we are talking about here is a .31 acre tract that was annexed into the city of Raton. Previously, it was located in the county. And typically, you would see a zoning designation of rural holding zone in the county. But a rural holding zone designation is, typically applies to ranch land, pasture land, and we would see how that property was going to develop. But as it develops, we really need to determine that it's going to be developed as and zoned as residential, commercial, or industrial. Now, when you see an R1, an R4, or an R5, those are residential, the usages are similar, but we're really talking about the difference in those designations would be density. So an R1 would allow a larger lot, an R5, the minimum lot size would be smaller. So we would be in a denser area. So an R4 designation is typical in a residential area. Now, the property was annexed to the city, but that did not change the zoning. So the zoning is rural holding zone, and as implied, it is kind of a holding designation. And the proposal has gone before the Planning and Zoning Commission, now comes to the city commission at the request of the staff, myself specifically, because we need to determine. Now, it's not ranch land, it's not pasture land, it's not appropriate to leave a spot zone of a rural holding zone in the city boundary. So we're recommending, and that's my recommendation, staff recommendation, that we rezone it to rural, to an R4 residential designation. Now, really, you see that, and we've included several maps in your packet, and hopefully we've done an adequate job of telling you where this is located and the character of the neighborhood. But if you look at the property ownership map, you can see that those properties that are on the west side of this, or to your left as you're looking at the map, or above it, that's all zoned R4. So one thing in zoning, we do not want to create a spot zone. So it would be contiguous with R4. It looks like it's the obvious correct choice. We did go to Planning and Zoning Commission at the last meeting, held a public hearing there, and the recommendation to the commission from the Planning and Zoning Commission was unanimous to rezone this tract to R4.
So it matches the rest of it.
Now, I would emphasize, this is not done at the request of a property owner or a developer. This is a request of the city manager to really clean up that present spot zone.
Is there anyone that would like to address the commission on this issue?
Madam Mayor, I make a resolution. I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 201512, amending the official zoning map of the city of Raton by changing the tract to land located at 1501 Trenesa Road from RHZ to R4.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to change the zoning from RHZ to R-4, the property at 1501 Trenesa Road. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Procham Segala?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacomo?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. We have a very brief report tonight because I didn't anticipate a longer meeting, and I'm really sorry to disappoint you that it's not longer than it was. But we'll be kind of brief here. Report to you that Tricia here has gone to training during the last week in its training regarding registration, licenses, lodger's tax, and liquor as it applies to the city clerk. I would also note to you that Tricia has been in contact with the state alcohol people as far as our governmental liquor license that would obtain through the convention center, and that's moving along. We're still kind of learning some about the process, but we hope to wrap that up pretty soon so that when scheduled events come up later in the year, we're set for that. So we think that it's on track. I would tell you that Public Works Crew has been working on pothole patching, as we've talked about, some drainage improvements as we talked about. But we've put a lot of work and effort into some improvements at our solid waste facilities. Specifically, we've been working on fencing improvements at the old landfill and doing some general cleanup in that area. I think last time, at the last meeting, we said that there were, there was some recoding, some polyurethane coating going on at the floor of the convention center, that wood gym floor. That's complete now, it's had time to cure, so we're ready to host events there again. We have asked users to be friendly to the floor, so like some of the mats that we use in some of the activities, we're trying to move those downstairs to not cup up the floor immediately. But if you get a chance to look at it, it looks great, and I think we're ready to go for a while. We all did attend the district meeting at the Municipal League in Las Vegas last week, so that did give you all a chance to hear from the Municipal League about what came out of the legislative session. And I guess the bottom line was that no capital outlay, and a lot of bills didn't make it through or subsequently got vetoed. So we got that report from the Municipal League. I intend to be gone the 22nd to 23rd. We have some business in Albuquerque, and the Municipal League, the self-insurers, will be conducting their mandatory training, and that's, I'll attend that. It's an eight-hour session on the 23rd. We'll talk about our dividend for our insurance students, working comp, and I'll bring that information back to you at the next meeting. And then I have one last item. I did get a letter here from DOT, and I would tell you that Jared Chatterley and Jason Phillips had worked on together a grant application through the recreational trails program. And let me read from the letter. It's from Tamara Haas, the Director of Asset Management and Planning Division of New Mexico DOT. She says, "It's my pleasure to inform you that New Mexico DOT has selected Suniya Raton to receive a recreational trails program funding award for the project Roundhouse Park Trail Maintenance. The project award is for fiscal year 2017." So what she's telling us is that the match actually comes from a federal program, I mean, the grant funds from a federal program. And they're giving us $42,720. They're asking for a local match of $7,280. Total project, $50,000. Now, a lot of people use the walking trails in the area of the aquatic center, and because there's really not that tire traffic on it, that those trails age a little differently than what we would see on streets. So we have cracking going on there, and we have kind of a weathering, oxidation of that asphalt. So this $50,000 would be to resurface those trails and try to control the cracking. So like I say, fiscal year 2017, we've got a while to work on this, and that $7,280 match is required. That's all I have there.
Okay, thank you. We had put on the agenda a closed executive session pursuant to NMSA 10-15 litigation, but our attorneys on this particular item requested that we not go into the executive session until our next meeting. So is there any other business to come before the commission? Seeing none? Meeting adjourned.